Good evening, I'd like to call the honor this regular meeting of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education, December 17th, 2018, 7:00 PM. Ms. Cropper, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Barber?
Here.
Ms. Choice?
Here.
Dr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
All allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our exits are, of course, there where you came in, and then we also have exits at this end of the room. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved, second.
Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And we have some guests with us.
Thank you, sir. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight from Turpin High School, the Chamber Choir, under the direction of Michelle Burkey. So, if you would please, these students are from Turpin High School. Welcome. I actually had a chance to rehearse with them a little bit out there. But they were -- they quickly kicked me out of the chamber. I couldn't hang.
Everybody, that was our original piece. We wrote, definitely. But now we're going to sing another song, which is a jazzy version of Jolly Old Saint Nicholas. I'm really excited. I swear.
Oh, hey there, Mr. Santa Claus, jolly old Saint Nick. Santa, get your action on, Santa, get here quick. Oh, jolly old Saint Nicholas, mean you're here this way. Don't you tell a single soul what I'm going to say. Christmas Eve is coming soon, now you dear old man. Whisper what you'll bring to me, tell me if you can. Hey there, Mr. Santa Claus, jolly old Saint Nick. Santa, get your action on, Santa, get here quick. Oh, when the clock is striking, oh, when I cast a sleigh. Do, 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 do. With your paddle, do, 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 do. All the stars, you are flying, hanging, do, do, do. I hope you're sure as one, you'll be sure to do. Hey there, Mr. Santa Claus, jolly old Saint Nick. Santa, get your action on, Santa, get here quick. Oh, Johnny wants a pair of skates, Susie wants a sled. Daddy wants a picture book, yellow, blue, and red. Now I think I'll leave to you what to give the rest. Choose for me, dear Santa Claus, you will know the best. Hey there, Mr. Santa Claus, jolly old Saint Nick. Santa, get your action on, Santa, get here quick. Yes, on your midnight trip, yes, Santa, get here quick tonight. Ba, ba, le, ba.
Thank you, that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Students, thank you very much. Another example of why Forest Hills is rated one of the best 27 schools in the nation for music and performing arts. So, that's an example, I think, of why we receive such national credit. So, thank you all, and happy holidays.
Item four, approval of minutes. Have a motion to approve one or more of the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
You want to list which ones?
Okay. Got, um, November 6, 2018.
Teaching and Learning Committee.
Yeah, Teaching and Learning. That was, yeah, November 6.
4.2.
Okay, approval of minutes of Business Advisory Council Meeting, November 8, 2018. Approval minutes of Special Board Meeting, November 10, 2018. Approval minutes of Previous Regular Meeting, November 26, 2018.
Second. Ms. Cropper?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 5.1, correspondence.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mrs. Monk to help me out here for a second, but do we have good volume with the microphone? Like, can Alana's microphone reach? Oh, it's up there already? Oh, cool. Well, this video is kind of fuzzy. It was created by a person who I asked to video during this presentation, and this is a special presentation for us, it was held in the board office, and it's about safety and security. And the gentlemen who are here, the first person who will be speaking, he is behind the podium, that is Kevin Coomer. He is Assistant Federal Security Director of Inspections for TSA. Joseph Bolzer is the gentleman in blue next to him, and Joseph Bolzer, and then Todd Hershey is the gentleman in the sweater there, and they are from the Transportation Security Inspectors Agency in northern Kentucky and the Cincinnati area. And so they've been working with our school district. It started out as inspections on our bus routes and opportunities to increase safety and security on our buses, and it has turned into a full-fledged relationship with the local TSA to assist us with many aspects of our safety and security programs. And so, they are talking about the full-scale safety drill that we conducted this summer as a school district. And so here's the commentary from Kevin Coomer, who is the Assistant Federal Security Director of Inspections.
... which was an unprecedented event, and was very successful. I was fortunate enough to be there as a server and allow for various successful inquiries. And we just want to recognize the efforts and success. Obviously, I can't say thank you and recognize everyone, individuals involved in the board and student role players, that were just phenomenal. But we had some key representatives and key folks that were contributing to this success of the exercise, and we just wanted to recognize them with a TSA John Pointe in the board and administration to come up and get that. First, of all, I want to recognize Superintendent Scott Preble.
Okay, so, the rest of the people who will be coming up, and what I have is the medallion that was presented to the school district, to me, on behalf of the school district, and they consider our drill to be a phenomenal drill, state-of-the-art drill, and they gained a lot of knowledge from it, and they were able to take what we were doing in our school district and pass it on to others that they are working with. So this is important for us as a school district, and for you to know as community members, that safety and security is paramount in our daily activities and in the operations of our school district, and we are receiving credit from federal agencies regarding the steps that we are taking. Other people who received the medallion are Officer Bob Getke, he is the School Resource Officer in our school district, Kevin Bly, who is the Hamilton County Sheriff Department, he comes from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, he is a sergeant, and then Chief Rick Martin, who is from the Anderson Township Fire and Rescue. And so those individuals received medallions on that morning, as well as did John Eckert, who works in our school district out of the Business Operations Department on all of our safety and security initiatives. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew at the board level that we receive this credit, and that, once again, we're leading the way as best we can with safety and security in the area. The second thing that I wanted to provide to the Board of Education is a pretty exciting thing, Rob Fellows, who is unable to be with us this evening because he is ill, and almost his entire family is ill. He was upset that he could not be here, but he called me pretty excited about this that I am about to read. And there are only, Anderson High School is the only school in Hamilton County to receive this award three consecutive years, and Anderson High School is only one of 11 in the state of Ohio to achieve this award three consecutive years in a row. And this award is the Momentum Award, and it is presented by the State Board of Education and recognizes schools for exceeding expectations in student growth for one year. Schools must earn straight A's on all value-added measures on the report card. The school or district must have at least two value-added subgroups of students, which includes gifted, the lowest 20% in achievement, and students with disabilities. So this award that was presented to Anderson High School, which Turpin High School has also received, it's the third consecutive year for Anderson High School. They are only one who have received this award in Hamilton County for three years in a row, and what it speaks to is growth that students are having across a school year. And so all of our students, according to this Momentum Award from the Ohio Department of Education, are exceeding the expectations for growth in a year. So we're pretty excited about that. And so, congratulations, Anderson High School, it's a great feat. Another bit of correspondence, it's kind of a response to some correspondence that I have read lately, and I think it's important that I mention this this evening. And so I have some comments that I have written to ensure that I stay on point. So recently, some inaccurate and terribly misleading information has been circulated throughout our community regarding the ongoing construction project at Anderson High School. In fact, there are so many inaccuracies and distortions that simply are not true, that I am compelled to set the record straight. First, it is important to note that Forest Hills Schools is a good steward of the public dollar. We watch every penny extremely closely and go to great lengths to ensure high levels of accountability in all that we do. Second, while the Anderson High School project is slightly over budget, it is not costing taxpayers additional dollars. Like so many construction projects, some delays and changes in the early stages of this project did cost additional dollars, additional funds. However, the district leadership and Board of Education has taken action to correct those issues, and is moving forward with a project that will be completed before the 2019-20 school year begins. That includes all, all of the original elements, and is within set dollar figure approved by our voters, the set dollar figure approved by our voters. We are honoring our promise to this community, to our community. Third, the district is actively involved in a process to make accurate payments for site work that was completed. Funds for this work are available, but are currently frozen because of a discrepancy between two external companies. Once the issue is resolved, Forest Hills Schools will be able to complete the payments and move forward with high-quality work for our school project. Additionally, it should be noted, unlike posted on social media and written in recently printed material, two contracts exist at Anderson High School, one for building construction and one for site work. The contracts are exclusive, they are not one. The district, as many of you are aware, did not feel that Performance Construction was adequately completing its work under the renovation contract, and we terminated Performance Construction's work on the renovation project and made a claim against Travelers Insurance on the performance bond. Travelers Insurance has taken over the renovation contract, and work continues under that contract. Travelers Insurance did hire Performance Construction to complete the work, but our contract is now with Travelers Insurance. Progress to date has been very good. We expect the renovation work to be completed by the start of the next academic year. As indicated, there was also a separate contract with Performance Construction for site preparation. Under the site preparation contract, Performance Construction subcontracted certain work to J&amp;D Rack Company. J&amp;D Rack claims to have performed work in excess of the contract amounts. We disagree and have refused to pay for extra work that J&amp;D Rack claims to have completed. Because we have refused to pay for work we do not believe was properly authorized or completed, in a legal maneuver, J&amp;D Rack filed what is called a lien on public funds. And a lien on public funds merely means that J&amp;D Rack claims that it is owed money. It does not mean that there has been any determination that it is owed that money, and we still have not paid. Because we still dispute the claim and have not paid, J&amp;D Rack also filed a lawsuit against Performance Construction, the school district, and others. And I am not at liberty to discuss the contents of that, because it is in litigation, and I hope that you understand that. Finally, it is important to know that leaders and the Board of Education at Forest Hills Schools are in control of this project, and are taking appropriate steps to ensure an excellent school facility is provided for our students in a cost-effective manner for our taxpayers. And I would ask you, if you have questions related to our ongoing construction project, please contact my office at 513-231-3600 to ensure that you have the factual information. We believe in opinion, we believe in open and honest communication, and are eager to engage the residents about this and other topics. And I'd like to thank you for listening this evening. And, Mr. Fruman, I had a presentation to move forward in the superintendent's portion, but it seems that after public comments, the room empties. So I would like to take advantage, with your permission, to add some other commentary in this portion of our meeting, if it's okay with members of the board, related to documents that I sent to the board on Friday in preparation for today's meeting.
Sure.
Susan, there's a PowerPoint. Ladies and gentlemen, we have had two tele-town hall meetings, and we have had one open town hall meeting for residents of our community to become engaged in a conversation regarding our school district, potential new resources, and any other aspect that people would like to discuss. And on December 18th, we will engage the public again in another survey that will be a telephone-type survey. So in an effort to communicate and engage and learn more about how our residents feel about our school district and its operations, we are opening up conversations. Tele-town, where people call in and we spend time with them on the telephone, open town hall meetings, board meetings where people have an opportunity to speak, survey that is going to come out on December 18th, and continued open town hall meetings. And there are a lot of questions that are coming to us that we want to respond to. Before we do that, I'd like to share, before we get into that, I'd like to share some things with you about performance in our school district. We're ready, please. As we talked about a few minutes ago with Anderson High School receiving the Momentum Award, our school district is a phenomenal school district, and our community, over the years, has supported this phenomenal school district in so many ways. And what we see is excellence in performance, and we are known statewide as a lighthouse school district. When I was in Cleveland, I was very much aware of what was happening in Forest Hills. When I was in Columbus, I was very much aware of what was happening in Forest Hills. We are a school district that is a great place to be for students. And U.S. News &amp; World Report suggests that we have, in the country, the best high schools, the top 4% of all high schools in the country. U.S. News &amp; World Report says in the state of Ohio that we have the top 5% of all schools in performance. The NISH program, which is an organization that evaluates schools and communities, and the combination of schools and communities working together, provides NAGL and every one of our elementary schools in our school district an A on their reports. So we receive an A on all seven schools, we're noticed by U.S. News &amp; World Report, the college board has recognized us for the number of AP courses that we provide, for the increased student performance in those courses, and the increased scores that those students are receiving on tests associated with AP courses. The National Association of Music Merchants considers us to be one of the best, one of the 27 best communities for music education, we just saw an example of that. The Ohio Department of Education has provided our preschool program five-star ratings, which is the absolute best. We have received As on our local report card for our value-added, which again is work, is growth across a school year. We have received awards for our positive behavior intervention programming that we have within our schools for culture and climate. We have five of our six elementaries in this school district that are Hall of Fame school districts. Cincinnati Magazine rates our two high schools, Turpin is the 10th-best high school in Hamilton County, in Cincinnati area, and Anderson High School as the 13th. We have what we would consider to be return on investment. We have what we believe is a return on investment of a community that is extremely generous to us. So entities like RE/MAX consider us to be a top Cincinnati district for home values. Our average home sale in Anderson Township is 31.7 days from the day it's put on the market until the day it closes. We are seventh in Hamilton County in tax dollars going to the classroom. 73% of every dollar that's raised and brought into our coffers goes directly into classroom instruction. And we average, the average tax assessment of $100,000 is below the Hamilton County average. And, we just almost, well, we completed the eighth of nine of our renovation projects on a $103 million bond to upgrade our schools. And we have Anderson High School left. And I will tell you that there have been things that we have wished we could have done again with Anderson High School, with Turpin High School, Summit Elementary, and every other building that we are working on. And yes, we are over budget on our projects by 4%, which is inconsistent with the average across the country from 7 to 11%. Are we over on our budgets? Yes, we are. Are we at the national average? No, we are not. And so we are extremely mindful of your generous contributions to our school district, and we are very mindful of how dollars are spent, and that was some of the commentary from before. We will not pay someone who is not meeting our expectation. Our community expects better from us. Next slide that I have is a representation of what it costs to educate a student in the Forest Hills School District. It's $9,939 to educate a student in our school today. And when we started in 2012 with our last operating levy, it cost $8,783. So since the last levy for operations was passed in 2012, we have increased our costs from $9,939, or to $9,939, from $8,783. And if you see the $15,142, that is a school in Hamilton County. So you can see how the costs could go up. 2.5% on average is how much we have increased over those years. The next part of this slide shows that our compensation over the same period of time across our school district has averaged 2% per year of an increase. And you will see, of the 2.5% up above, 2% of that is related to staffing, which is our highest expenditure in the school district. So of that 2.5% we have increased, 2% of it is about people in our school district that serve our students. And during the same period of time, between 2012 and 2018, our enrollment has decreased 1.7%. So the obvious question would be, if your enrollment is decreasing, how are your costs increasing? There is no inflationary model in the state of Ohio's budget for how schools are paid, or how schools receive money from the state. But during this time, as part of the district's strategic vision, we have added a preschool teacher based on the number of students who are coming to our school district for preschool. We have added, during this same period of time, 12.5 all-day kindergarten teachers. We have added two Mandarin teachers to help our students be prepared in global languages. We have added one psychologist, and we hear much about health and wellness and safety and security and counseling services for students. It is an important thing across our school district, as well as our state and country. We have added two assistant athletic directors in our athletic programs. We have added 1.5 ELL teacher during this period of time, and an ELL teacher, ELL teacher is a teacher who teaches students who do not have English as their first language. So the demographics of our community have changed over that time, and we are meeting needs by putting specialists in classrooms to be able to bring students along who do not speak English as a first language. We've added five teacher leaders over that period of time for instructional practices necessary for the innovative things that we're doing, for the technology additions that we have in our school district, and for connecting our curriculum in problem-based 21st-century ways. We've added five custodial maintenance people over that same period of time, mostly in the last two years, because of our increased square footage with the construction that we have done, where we've added classrooms to our schools. We've added an experienced teacher, which is part of experiential learning, and getting students to not only work inside of our schools, but have opportunities outside of our schools with mentors. our schools with mentorships, with opportunities to work with businesses and partnering, partnering with them. And during that same period of time, we have reduced two administrative positions in the school district. So we have added 29 positions over that time to meet the needs of our students while we have maintained 2.5% increase. So over that time, we are just above the cost of living expense during that same period of time while we have expanded our programs for students in our school district in associate, in association and alignment with the district's strategic vision to serve our students. The next slide that comes up. When you take a look at school finance, cash balance is extremely important. It is extremely important. And when school districts pass operational levies, we begin to receive the appropriate amount of dollars to operate our schools. And that appropriate amount of dollars is more than what the budget requires when the levy is passed to ensure that the levy will be able to, the money will be there for the time period that was promised. So in 2012, the time period was a three-year promise and we began to collect appropriate dollars at that particular time, again generously provided by our local community. So cash balance is something to watch. If you look at the screen, the far-left column is 2018, that is where we are today, and it shows that our cash balance is $13 million. And over time, that cash balance is diminished because we are in what is called deficit spending. We are now in the point of our operational levy where we are spending more money than the community agreed to provide us. And you see that that goes down and someplace between 2020 and 2021, those two lines will cross. That appropriate amount of money that our taxpayers agreed to give us is no longer meeting the needs of the school district. And I talked a little bit about an inflationary mechanism. In Ohio, there's been a ruling that it's been unconstitutional on three separate rulings, the funding model in the state of Ohio. And this is, this is a good example of why. When we raise money, that money stays consistent from that point forward. It cannot go up and it does not go down regardless of your home values increase or decrease. And the only time in our nation's history in Ohio where we saw a decrease in home values in the recent century is during the Great Recession. And so that line always stays the same and most of the time, your tax bill, as your home value goes up, is decreasing percentage-wise. You're still giving the same amount of money, but it is decreasing percentage-wise. So in the state of Ohio, there is no mechanism that helps money inflate over time. It is the same value. And so that is why at some point, the lines will cross. The original 2012 five-year forecast projected that the district would remain solvent through fiscal year 2016. That was a three-year guarantee that our Board of Education made with our community. We are now approaching 2019 and the board has not been back for additional resources. So fiscal responsibility has been, is, and always will be on the mind of our Board of Education and administration. And so the current five-year forecast projects that without the passage of a new levy sometime in 2019, the district's fiscal year 20 cash balance will fall below a level recommended by leading financial experts and agencies in the state of Ohio. And this is why we have opened up a conversation with our community. Its cash balance, it is dwindling. We are getting to a point in time where it is getting to a point where if we do not change something, we will need to make reductions in our school system, or we will need to come to an agreement with our community about additional resources. Another part of this slide which is important, and we talked about all of this, almost all of this, 83% of this is governed by personnel. A school district is a service organization and service organizations are mainly people like hospitals, grocery stores, and any other entity that is a service-oriented entity. So 83% of this district's budget goes directly to people that serve students. 73% of those dollars that come in from our community go directly into the classroom for instruction for students. 60% of the people employed in this school district live in Anderson Township, live in the Forest Hills School District, are also contributing to the school system. And 1%, that NISH organization that I talked about a few minutes ago, they evaluated 27,000 school districts across the country. They consider the Forest Hills staff, teaching staff, to be in the top 1% of all teachers in the country. So 83% of our budget is people, 73% of that makes its way to the classroom, 60% of those people live in our communities, and 1% considered to be the best across the country. Next slide that I have to share with you is where Forest Hills fits or compares to other school districts in Hamilton County. So when you look at other school districts, and there are 22 in our county, you see that in Forest Hills, we are ranked 15th in the millage or the amount of money that is paid in taxes to the school district against the field of 22. It is as high as 62 mils and it is low as 25 mils. Much of this is based on property value, but you can see that we are ranked 15 among 22 schools in Hamilton County. The next slide that is available is the cost-per-pupil comparison, which I spoke to a few minutes ago. You can see that Forest Hills is ranked 12 out of 22 schools in Hamilton County. And I don't put this up there to make any other comment than you can see where Forest Hills ranks. And with all of the records and the performance and the accolades and all the national and state awards that we receive, it is my humble opinion that that price point against the field is value for this community. And I would also like to say that there are predominantly five choices that people make who live in Anderson Township or in the Forest Hills schools that choose to send their children to other parochial schools. First of all, I can support that. A parent has the right to make a choice about where their child should be educated. That is a personal choice and one that I can support as long as need be. The important part there is all five of those choice institutions cost more than $9,939. And only one of those students, or one of those schools has more national merit students than Forest Hills. So out of those choice institutions, four out of five, we have more national merit scholars. We do it for a lesser cost. And now, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them or clarify anything that I may have missed.
Thank you, Mr. Prebels. Item 5.2 is Procedures for Public Commentary. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda under Public Commentary. Individuals who'd like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic on the board's agenda should fill out one of the sheets, they're located at the front of the room, make sure they're passed in to the front so that we can call on you at the appropriate time. I think I saw somebody maybe has one, you need to turn them in so we can call on you during the appropriate point of the meeting. And then item 6.1, Nagel Middle School, Mr. Peters. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hello, everybody. My name is Scott Peters and this is a few, a few of my students who are on the move. I wanted to share with you a little bit of a program that we've developed and talk to you a little bit about how, how it's going with Nagel. But first, we'd like for you all to kind of join into an activity. I'm sure that you've sat in the classroom before and been kind of bored and lost focus, and maybe you're in a stressful board meeting. So I think that exercise has proven, and science has proven that exercise has been really good for not only staying focused and paying attention, but also some other things too. So here in a second, if you would, if you'd like to participate, we're going to ask you to stand up and you're just going to pump your arms like you're running. We're going to do that for 30 seconds and then I'm going to have you sit down and do one other thing and see how you feel. So would anybody like to part this pic?
Student.
All right, you want to, if you'd like to part this pic. Yes, set, and go.
I beat you.
10 seconds left.
Turn faster.
Oh, exactly.
I know, right? I can't help it.
All right, now, keep. All of the chemicals in your brain are running around and a lot of times you need to kind of channel them in. So we're going to ask you to breathe a little bit and hopefully you can, through your breathing, you can kind of control all of it. So we're going to ask you to breathe in. One, two, three, hold, breathe out. One, two, three, four, five. Breathe in. One, two, three. Breathe out. One, two, three, four, five. Last time, breathe in, close your eyes, please. Three, breathe out. Two, three, four, five, six. Oh, good, good. Awesome. All right, so on the, on the move, where I kind of dropped this up or got this idea from is actually a lot of different things out in social media and items like that. But the very first thing that I was able to do was to find this book. And this book is, has research through a Harvard professor called Dr. John Rady. He promotes exercise for prepping the brain for learning. And I was always really interested in trying to make the connection between exercise and the brain and learning. Down at the bottom, it talks about making sure that cardiovascular exercise was connected with attention and concentration levels. So students who are physically active and fit and are alert and experience growth in the brain cells or enhancement of those brain, brain cells. He calls it miracle growth for the brain. So kind of an ironic thing and I thought, well, I really have to read and research this a little bit more and see what happens. So this is a picture of two different groups. One group sat quietly on the left-hand side, one group took a 20-minute walk. After that 20-minute walk, you can see the difference in the activity of the brain and that promotes growth. The next thing that we had was in the book, Dr. Rady mentioned a couple of different types of schools that were sort of piloting this program. And I love my students, I want the best for them. And so I had a conversation with my wife and I said, Naperville's a place I'd like to go to visit. Of course, it was up in Chicago, Illinois. So I went ahead and I went up there on a Saturday and the guy on the right, his name is Paul Zentarski, I sat down with him and had a little bit of a discussion on what his program was all about. And it really interested me that he had students that were low in math and literacy scores and he was able to improve their scores through all of these different types of movements and this little recipe that he had. Next slide. So the recipe for success is basically that the students need a certain amount of time. That time is about 20 to 30 minutes. The, the heart rate needs to be in a, in a certain zone, not all the time, but typically we'd like it around 125, that's called a target heart rate. There are a bunch of unique activities, so it's not just doing gym class. There are different things that we ask our, our students to do. And then it's strategically placed, so basically that means we have, right after my class, which is kind of our schedule here at Nagel, which is called academic class time, I have the ability to work with the students very early in the morning and then as soon as that is over, we put them into a class regardless of whether they're having trouble with it or not. And we've seen a tremendous amount of growth in their academic ability. So that recipe has to basically happen for middle and mid, mid work. Up in a right-hand corner, you're seeing kind of a typical class for us. There are a lot of different things that are going on. One of them would be some type of cross-curricular, which basically means your body is in a midline and if you cross it over one way or the other, it allows for both sides of your brain to work. In the back, you see there are bicycles there, so we're getting off, they're harving up. On the left-hand side, you're seeing some people juggling, a lot of the ability to balance also. And then you'll see towards the left at the very end, they're looking like they, they're playing hopscotch, but actually they're looking to read whatever words or math problems and then they're jumping to those squares to try to solve the problems or be able to spell the words out. So it's pretty cool stuff. The, I think the next slide we have are some testimonials. Okay. So one of the ways that, it's hard for me sometimes to always ask somebody to stop and check their heart rate. So one of the ways we have students be able to see their heart rate is through the heart rate watches. And thanks to the Forest Hills Foundation for Education, last year we were able to receive a grant that was able to have students use these heart rate watches and that was a really big moment for me. It's been, been kind of a passion of mine for a long, long time. It was awesome. I was super surprised. I think I remember saying, you were the most surprised of all of them, but it was, it was a really good day. So we use those all the time. It's, it's, students love them, they're comfortable, they're able to kind of check every once in a while, so it's a really good tool for us to use. So some of the teachers, we have what I call champions and you have to have some champions in the academic part of it to be able to connect. This is Kirsten Hall, she's a separate science teacher and she really picks up on with the kids after they come from my class, talks about how students are more calm, are more attentive, people that are taking tests or anxiety has left them, the depression part has left them, there are people that really enjoy, you know, coming that used to not want to come to school, they enjoy class, so that they also come to school. We have one other faculty member that also is basically one of our champions. But instead of me talking all the time, I brought, brought our students here. This is Henry McGurn and his sister Sammy. This is Morgan Frands and Kennedy, yeah.
Morgan.
Thank you. All right, so, so I don't know if you guys want to say a few words about how, how it did for you? What'd you like about the Met Center?
I think it helps me blow off steam and really help me focus in class more.
My friends all said that I was in a way better mood after this class.
You told me the other day, you said you were, it's hard for you now to stay awake a little bit.
It made me a little stressed during class. I gave my energy, I was being more focused throughout the day.
Yeah. It's pretty, it's pretty good stuff. We have a couple of slides of Dana as well and one is just talking about focusing. And so most of the kids feel pretty focused about that. The next slide is actually one of my favorites. Right now, we only have it three days a week and it's an eight-week course and we'll eventually get more students. It's, it's interesting to ask both sets of students, you know, when they're on the week, or the weeks that I have them and the weeks that I don't, it's, there's quite a bit of difference. But you see that the mixed ability levels and that 83% have increased their academic level during the class that we did. Probably sooner, I don't know, maybe 150 students, maybe a little less than that during the course the last two years that we've done. So it's a pretty awesome program. I don't know if you guys have anything else to say. There were a little noise coming in here, as I was, too.
So Mr. Peters, I wanted to say thank you and also to the students. Ladies and gentlemen, physical education class... Ladies and gentlemen, uh, physical education class, for me, when I was in school, was another class you went, but it wasn't necessarily connected to the rest of the school. And this is another example of how we're using brain research, we're using innovative things in our classrooms, and they're not only helping in that particular classroom, but there are connections to other places in the building. And when we see achievement going up as a result of, of our physical education classrooms and our health classrooms and helping students better understand their bodies and how to, you know, reflect and be able to, to, uh, reduce stress, believe it or not, there's a lot of stress at a 13- and 14-year-old age's life, uh, it's important, and so I want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank the foundation for their commitment, again, to assisting us and providing us opportunities to do those extra things that we might not necessarily see in other school districts, but certainly give us an advantage and most importantly, help our students. And that I appreciate and thank you very much for.
Thank you very much. Item 7.1 are our public comments. Do we have all the sheets? Um, we'll have three, you'll be limited to three minutes. I will stop you at three minutes. It's not my intent to be rude, but merely to keep us on, uh, as close to schedule as we can. First up is Mike Bellicor.
Hi, my name is Mike Bellicor. I think most of you tonight know who I am. You've heard me speak on various issues, you've read the emails I've sent, and Mr. Prebels even has taken time to meet with me one-on-one to discuss, um, concerns that I have had. Um, you've urged people to become involved, and I've done it. Tonight I come here to give you my opinion on the upcoming decision on putting an operating levy on the ballot. While I'm here to share my opinion, I can say with certainty that it's an opinion shared by many in the community, one that I think you need to listen to. Put quite simply, I'm done. I'm done with the smoke and mirrors, I'm done with the feeling like I'm not getting the whole story, I'm done with the scandals, the lawsuits, the liens, et cetera. I'm done with being lied to, I'm done with the closed-door decisions being made with my tax dollars. With that said, I'm proud of this district. I'm proud of the things my son and daughter and other, their friends and students do. I'm proud of the work my sister and other educators in this district do. I'm proud of groups like we've seen tonight, the Turpin Group, the Nagel Group, that's awesome. But what you need to know, you, the board and the administration, have lost my trust. You have lost my belief that the decisions that you are going to make are in the best interests of our students and our community, that I can trust you to be physically responsible. You have pushed me to a place, and lots of others too, that if an operating levy is put in front of me right now, for the first time since I was 18-years-old, I have to think about voting no. I support this district, the students and the teachers that make it great. What I don't know that I can do is trust this board and current administration with more of my money to make the right decisions. Decisions that will benefit those students and those teachers, and also the community at large, and show you, show you know how to appropriately use that money. I urge you to really think about this issue on the ballot. Now is not the time. There needs to be some repairing of the relationship between you and me, between you and the community, between you and the people that live in this district. You need to open your door, show them you can be trusted. I know not putting a levy on the ballot is going to lead to some tough decisions. I say make those minor cuts now. Show the community that you can and want to be physically responsible. Start practicing full disclosure. Show me you can be trusted. Now, you can say this is my perception, but I will tell you, this is a perception that is shared by many in the community. Like any good marketing firm will tell you, perception equals reality. And the reality is, if a levy is put on the ballot in May, you face an uphill battle due to the perception of this community. So do something about it. In closing, I'll leave you with an analogy I put in my letter to Mr. Prebels this fall. This school district is a big ship, and we're all passengers. And guess what? That iceberg is dead ahead. So take the wheel and steer us around it, because if we don't change our course, we're going to hit that iceberg, and we know how that movie's going to end.
Thank you, Mr. Bellicor.
So please take the wheel. Thank you.
Hi, I guess I just want some more clarification of exactly what this levy is going to be. I know in 2014, you guys put a $103 million bond for 32 and a half years, which cost each of us $173.25 per $100,000 home. You also enacted a .5 mil permanent improvement levy for facility renovations. So my question tonight is, exactly what is this next levy going to be? How much is it going to be? We're in a deficit, so where is the money coming from to pay out that deficit, especially if we don't pass the new levy? How long is new levy going to be? Are we going to be looking at an anticipation for a bond? All of these questions are out there, and you guys, I would have thought that tonight you would have had something about the levy for next month that you have to vote on being on the school board's agenda. So I was kind of dissatisfied and, and that you didn't have anything on there. Um, I guess those are my questions for tonight, just to get a whole lot more clarification since there's none out there.
Thank you. Randy Travis.
Good evening, good evening. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everyone. I don't know how to follow this up. I mean, God, they took everything from me. There are some concerns in this community, and you should be able to feel it now. Lies, deceits. When bond money's given, that's where it should be used. When you take money and you're going, hey, you know what? It's okay, we're going to go buy this, uh, Bus Depot, but we're not going to use that money. When the community gives you that money and you're trusted with it, you're supposed to use it in that area. When you take it upon yourselves and you go ahead and go, hey, you know what? We're going to save money. We need to keep more cash on hand, we're going to privateize. So I do believe it's what, a little over $2 million? All of a sudden, that $2 million, after you finance it, it's close to $4 million. These taxpayers are going to have to pay for it. It's more and more. When we're told upfront, like Mr. Evans, we'll bring up Mr. Evans Landscaping, he got the retention pond. I asked last Monday night, where's the bids at? I was told by Mr. Broadwater, there was three bids. Through record requests that we have, there were no three bids ever put out. There was an explanation that, uh, over a year ago, that when the retention pond was told by the state you had to put it in, correct? That it was an emergency, and that he was just giving it. Nobody said, there was never, ever once said, in any of the records requests, that three bids were put out there. It was just given to Mr. Evans Landscaping. Looks like the good old buddy system. Hey, we'll pay, like I said, pay all this money for your land, and when in fact, through record requests, you actually wanted more than four acres. We have that also. You wanted six, but you got the four. And now that building down there, it needs more upgrades. You're going to spend more money on the upgrades. It needs a fire system, doesn't it? It doesn't require a fire system inside that building? There's not a sprinkler system? We love this community. I was in military for 12 years. I've been around, all around the world. I came back here to raise my family, and I have, and I want this continued for all of, everyone's kids in here, just not mine. I'm staying here, I'm in the full boat, folks, but the kids are our goal, the teachers are our goal, but the board, we're lacking confidence in right now, and the administrators. Do the right thing, and you know what the right thing is. Come on, it's, it's right in front of you. We've seen like the first construction company was let go of, because they told you there wasn't enough money for the $103 million. We have that in record requests, too. We have those copies where we said it, and they said, they told you, they're, that hold off on the Bus Depot, that's why the bond money isn't used.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Thank you. Item 8.1, updates, Mr. Prebels.
I already gave them on factual information earlier this evening.
Thank you. Item 9.1, we have an election of the president pro tem for our January 4th, 2019 organizational meeting.
I move we elect Jim Fruman, president pro tem for the organizational meeting for January 4th.
Second. Ms. Cropper.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Height?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 9.2 is board discussion. Um, I will make the following comment. We do have board discussion occasionally, and we often do it in work sessions. Because we all have full-time jobs, we tend to schedule those work sessions for 7:00 AM. And the last one we had was regarding the levy, and it was noticed and, um, published to the community, and anyone was welcome to come and listen to the board talk at length about levy considerations, including timing. No decisions were made. No one from the public came to that notice meeting. We don't take, uh, time like in the regularly scheduled meetings to have that kind of discussion, because it takes a lot of time and it doesn't allow us to get the rest of our work done. So these meetings, the regularly scheduled meetings, are different, and when we have a work session, those are the ones you ought to come to if you're interested in what we are talking about.
We're going to publish that, we're going to publish that, what we can say. It's good for you, but not for us, that we're the ones paying for you.
This isn't a discussion, this is the board's discussion. You're welcome, if you want to talk, you're welcome to fill out a sheet. Alright, item 10.1, business operations, Mr. Broadwater.
Mike, you need to... Good evening. Uh, for business operations, we have a few items on the docket for this evening. Item 10.1 is a change order for Anderson High School. It is a motion to approve the change order for Alt and Witzig Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $5,587.52. This is a change order for the, uh, soil engineer to take a look at the detention pond, to make sure everything is moving appropriately. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the, uh, change order for Alt and Witzig Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $5,587.52. For item 10.2, change order for Anderson High School detention pond area, and, uh, this is the detention pond area that Mr. Travis was discussing. This was under an urgent necessity, that it needed to be completed. The Hamilton County Soil and Water Department stated that it needed to be finished this past summer, therefore an urgent necessity. What I would say in response, uh, is, there are, there are no bids required, that's why you do an urgent necessity, it's quotes. So we have quotes, you have the original bid, which is J.D. Rack, which we have had issues with. We had two other quotes. We took the lowest quote, and it is complete, and it came in on budget, and it came in where it is completed appropriately. So my response would be that we always try to be good stewards. We try and research as much as possible, uh, and it is complete. This change order is in fact for a deduct. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Evans Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $2,955. And again, what I would say is, uh, as we go through any of these, uh, as Mr. Prebels has said, I have email, I've got a phone number, give me a call, I'll take you through any of the decisions we make, uh, and I can tell you, no dollar is spent without us poring over what we can do to best take care of our kids. That's why we're here, is to take care of kids and do things appropriately. So, for that change order, that is for the detention pond. 10.3, change order for Sherwood Elementary, partial roof replacement. This change order is a result of change in scope at Sherwood Elementary. If you remember, we had, uh, permanent improvement projects, this was to repair roof at Sherwood Elementary. We believed that we would replace, would have to replace the coping along the roofing. We did not. We found that we could, uh, keep that, therefore, this is another deduct change order in the value of $2,109. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Truecraft Roofing in the amount of $2,109. For 10.4, this is a change order for Turpin High School, and this is the change order, this will be the last change order for Turpin High School that we have in regards to the extended time. The project is now complete. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Monarch Construction in the amount of $43,074 for Turpin High School. Next, we have a change order, 10.5, for Wilson Elementary. This is another deduct change order, and this deduct change order, uh, is because of a plaque that is going to be done cheaper outside of the project. The superintendent recommends the board approve the change order submitted by Century Construction in the amount of $943.
Excuse me, Mr. Broadwater? Just to clarify, when we say deduct, that's a negative change order, which means it's a positive amount of money coming to our district, correct? Just want to clarify, we all understand that it's not actually money going out, it's money essentially coming back. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Broadwater.
Next is 10.6, the Lights Out Energy Consulting Agreement. And this consulting agreement, uh, the superintendent recommends the board approve the Lights Out Energy LLC consulting agreement as shown in the attachment. As you look at the attachment, what this allows us to do is, natural gas pricing is pretty competitive right now in the market, so we are going to work with a consultant to see what type of pricing we can get, if it's going to be better pricing than the agreement we have with Direct Energy right now, we are going to look to negotiate a better natural gas price for the district. This allows us to take a look at that, uh, does not bind us to a contract, but it allows us to examine what we would like to do with natural gas pricing. Next is 10.7. This is the Brightview Landscape Services Agreement, and this is the, uh, motion to approve the Brightview Landscape Services Agreement in the amount of $160,619.92. Uh, as the board remembers, we had a contract the last two years with Brightview. This is a reduction of $40,000 in the contract, because we are now going to do the athletic fields, uh, outside of the contract. We are going to use staff members that are currently employed, so there's no additional staff, there's no equipment that needs to be purchased, the cost is going to be fuel and the occasional upkeep of the equipment. So what we found with the athletic fields was, we need to be able to be a little bit more responsive to our athletic directors, and therefore we are taking that, uh, out of that contract. What the contract does include, if, if, if you're not aware, as you go through the contract, uh, it is a couple mulch applications, it's air raiding, it, it's not just the cutting, it's also the weed and feed, there's three applications, there's vegetation, uh, weeding throughout the whole, uh, contract as well. So there's a lot involved as you go through the landscape contract.
So, if, if I may?
Sure.
The original landscape contract was less money than the way we were doing it to begin with, and now through additional investigation, we've been able to hybrid, to some degree, that, which then is forcing the price down again.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, and again, the superintendent recommends the board approve the Brightview Landscape Services Agreement in the amount of $160,619.92, as shown in the attachment. Uh, moving on, for 10.8, the facilities update, we'll go ahead and take a look at that. And what we have at Anderson, that is the exterior of the band room, so if you look at it, not a whole lot has changed, but, uh, the chute that's taking out the top there, and what that top is, is the orchestra room and the band room on the second floor. We have now, uh, been able to get the students evacuated out of that at the end of this week. We are going to move everything out of those two areas. The band room is now complete, and when the kids get back, they will be in a new band room. And the next picture is the new band room. So if you look at what you have, you have clouds, uh, up in the ceiling, the top picture is November, bottom picture is December, and that is the new band room, which is on the back, which you just saw the back of, and, uh, it is basically complete. They're moving the casework down this week, and the students will be in when we get back from Christmas break. Next, that is the percussion room. The percussion room is right beside the band room, and November is up top, December on the bottom, and December, uh... And December, looking at it, we're pretty much complete. The area is where you have the garage door and the thought is, the percussion instruments will be able to go out the garage door and get right to the turf field. And that is another view of the percussion area, looking at it from the garage door in. And it is getting close to completion. That is the wrestling room and it is complete as we speak. So the wrestling room will be available. The, looking at the mats, those mats will be on the walls and the wrestling mats will be on the floor. For Turpin, what we have is, that's the auxiliary gym in November, close to being complete in December. It is complete. And we already have Mr. Hellegard, we already have athletes in there and they are using the gym. So that is a welcome addition to what you have in Turpin. Next slide, I decided I'd use Mr. Spencer's video. And if we click on the video, this is probably the best thing we saw at Turpin, if the video plays. If the video doesn't play, imagine that that trailer is moving off of the Turpin ground and we are done. So, Turpin-
I hear it.
Yes, you can hear it.
Slow-moving.
It's moving. Way to go, Dave.
There it is. There it is.
Yeah, so we were just trying to-
There it is.
So, the good news is, at Turpin, we are complete. We do have a bunch of punch lists. Dave shared a punch list with me today. And we'll go through all that and that to take quite a few months. But the good news is, we're fairly certain we are done at Turpin. And the next slide is looking at, some of you may have questions in regards to budget as I've heard. So looking at the next slide. The budget, you've got December up top, November is on the bottom. At Anderson High School, you can look at the value that is left, which is roughly $1.8 million left. And what I would say is, that is money that was in the bid. So that is money that is, if I say escrow, it's available and that's waiting for the pay apps. As we go through it, that will be paid out. And at Turpin High School, you have $543,000, almost $544,000. We've got the last pay app after this Board meeting. We'll have one pay app and then we hold on to retain each until that punch list is complete. And the hope is, that will be in a few months and we will be complete with Turpin High School. Okay. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Broadwater, anyone? No. Human Resources Report. Ms. Carnahan is not here this evening. Mr. Prebles?
I am not Mrs. Carnahan.
I'm aware of that.
I guess so. We'd like to wish Mrs. Carnahan a speedy recovery. She has had knee surgery and so she is not able to be with us this evening. But I did talk to her today and she's feeling much better and so we're thankful for that. On the Human Resources Report, Item A, you have resignations. There are three listed there for you, members of the Board. We call your attention to the second one there. You've received information on that in the recent past and so that has come to full conclusion. Item C is a change in salary. For that employer, that employee, it's temporary while the assistant is on sick leave. Item D is a change of assignment. And this individual is moving from an assistant coaching position to a JV coaching position. Item E, you see the person there listed at the bottom of Page 1 is beginning their first year probationary contract. And then if you turn to Page 2 in your document, you will see that all of the names listed there in that classified staff are ending their probationary and moving to one-year contracts in the district. Item C is a special services appointment. We have home instructor who will be providing education to students at home. Work beyond the contract for those individuals, all approved through timesheets. There's an OPC 177 seasonal work, bus cleaning that we will be doing per Article 32 of the OPC 177 contract. You see an assistant there for MAP testing, accompanist for vocal class at Turpin, and a choreographer for the winter play at Anderson High School. And Item G of your document is the appointment of additional assignment and coaches, consultants, advisors, and volunteers. And there are 13 of them listed there for you this evening. Item H is the student/teacher interns. And you can see the universities that we partner with and we're thankful for them and we're also glad to have those individuals with us. We approve these each month at the Board meeting. And then Item L of the document is all of the volunteers that we are so thankful that help us out in our classrooms and other aspects of our programming. And all of these individuals have had completed background checks. You see, Item J is a substitute, or substitute personnel. One of them is an administrator and another is a cook. And since the regular Board meeting on November 26, 2018, staffing has decreased .99 to 801.57. And there's an FTE worksheet that's been provided to you prior to this evening. And I recommend that the Board approve the personnel items as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Prebles. Item 12.1, Ms. Ryan, Student Teaching and Learning, Student Services.
Good evening. Teaching and Learning has two overnight trips for your approval this evening. 12.1 is an overnight trip for Anderson High School's 11 gymnasts and four chaperones are traveling to Broadview Heights on January 25th to the 27th. It's a weekend trip to compete in the Ron Ganem Legends Invite at Brexville-Broadview Heights High School. There is a $100 cost per student, which includes the meals and lodging. And they will be traveling with their parents for this particular trip. And there are fundraiser opportunities for this trip as well. Item 12.2 is an overnight trip also by Anderson High School for 11 varsity dance team members. They'll be traveling to Orlando, Florida, February 21st to the 25th for the national dance competition at Universal Studios. Their cost is $1,046 per student for airfare and their hotel accommodations, registration, and these other items that are included in this agenda item. They will be traveling by airplane and shuttle. The Superintendent is recommending the Board approve the two overnight trips by Anderson High School as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Item 13.1 is a 403B Plan Document Amendment. Ms. Cropper?
Item 13.1 is the request to amend our current 403B Plan Document. When the 403B Plan Document was last adopted in 2009, there was no option to have the plan approved by the IRS. That has now changed. The document as presented has simply been rewarded to meet the current 403B Plan Document standards of the IRS. There were no changes to our actual current 403B Plan. The IRS has reviewed the Plan Document as presented in your packet and it has given us an official letter indicating that the Plan Document meets all their regulatory requirements of a 403B Plan. Of course, the benefits of having this IRS letter is that it reduces and eliminates any risks that the Plan could be defined as defective under any sort of audit, be it an audit of the school district records or an audit of any of our Plan participants.
Thank you, Ms. Cropper. 13.2, Unemployment Compensation. Ms. Cropper?
This is an addendum to our current service agreement for the administration of workers' comp and unemployment claims. The contract is with Sedwick Claims Management Services. We are recommending a three-year term beginning January 2019. The first year has a 1.8% increase, which brings the total cost of the contract to $13,380. Year 2 has a 2.35% increase and a 2.3% increase in year 3. The contract also includes a 60-day termination clause, which has no penalties for early termination. The one-year contract term would have been a 3.1% increase, so that's why we're recommending the three-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Cropper. And Item 13.3, the Excess Workers' Compensation Insurance?
Action Item 13.3 recommends continuing our current contract for excess workers' compensation insurance with the Midwest Employers Casualty Company through the Berry Insurance Group. We're pleased to report that we obtained quotes from several companies and we were able to reduce our annual cost by over 30%. Our annual payment is reduced from $40,022 to $31,157. So we were pleased to be able to get that little over $9,000 reduction annually.
Thank you. And Item 13.4, the Treasurer's Report?
13.4A starts with donations received during the month of November. Donations totaled over $50,000, with the majority of that being donated to the Anderson and Turpin High School Athletics by Mercy Health. We certainly appreciate all of our donors whose gifts increase experiences for our students. The next item, 13.4B, is the Cash Activity Statement of Board Accounts for the month of November. Action Item 13.4C presents the General Fund, our five-year forecast funds receipts for the month and the fiscal year-to-date end at November 30, 2018. November is typically a low cash flow month and for sure, our cash flow was $2.8 million during the month. And that's pretty typical for this time of year. Items 13.4D and E present the expenditures in the General Fund for the month and the fiscal year-to-date. Expenditures in the General Fund are very stable throughout the year. With 41.6% of our fiscal year complete at the end of November, we have spent 41% of our appropriations. So spending is tracking exactly where we would expect it to be at this point. The November 30 bank reconciliations and investments are presented as Action Items 13.4F and G. Appropriation Adjustment Detail is Agenda Item 13.4H. And Agenda Item 13.4I presents Board Service Fund expenditures for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cropper? 13.5 is the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. Mr. Prebles, are you presenting that?
Each year, we-
Actually, we skipped one.
Oh, did I miss something?
Yeah. This is an annual resolution, so it's not typically with the Treasurer's Reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we bring-
That's okay.
13.4J is a resolution requesting that the county auditor make estimated advance payments of our taxes as they are collected, rather than waiting until the final accounting of all county taxes. That final accounting could take several weeks, so we appreciate their willingness to send us an estimate of our taxes so we can get that invested and start earning the low interest.
Thank you.
Mr. Fruman, the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, it isn't necessarily legal assistance directly to the district. It is an organization that obviously we are affiliated with that provides legal assistance regarding things that are happening at the state level that impact our budgets, our finances, and other things that are happening with relative cases in other parts of the state that might have influence on ours. And so that's our association. And they provide documents to school districts on a quarterly basis to provide us insights on that, so-
Well, membership's what, $250?
Yes, it's $250 membership.
It's a lot of bang for the buck.
Mr. Fruman, if I may, I think that's a great expenditure. It makes a lot of sense because to pool together a little bit of money to make some impact for major cases that could have precedent for our school district. Full disclosure, I'm the state chairman of that fund, so I will be abstaining.
We'll take that one separately then, when we get to the consent agenda. All right. And Item 13.6, the Membership Due's to the Ohio School Boards Association. Is that? All right. Item 13.6 is a motion to continue our longstanding membership in the Ohio School Boards Association. Randy, I presume you'll abstain from that one as well?
That's correct.
All right. So before we get on to the reports of the Board of Education, we'll need a motion for consent items 13, I'm sorry, 10.1 through 13.4. And then we'll do 13.5 and 13.6 together. So can I have a motion?
Move to approve Items 10.1 through 13.4.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. And can we have a motion for Items 13.5 and 13.6?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
For the record, I made the initial motion on that. I made the initial motion on that.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Heitz.
It's good. The two of you sound alike.
I know.
You do and I can't see you down there.
Our jackets are different.
Yeah, Randy needed to abstain. All right. We're on the reports to the Board of Education. 14.1, Business Advisory Counsel Report. Mr. Prebles?
We did not meet this month. Our next meeting will be February 21st.
Policy Committee. Mr. Smith?
We have not met, so that's the last meeting.
Human Resource Committee Report. We reported, not last month, the month before, we've not met either. Finance Committee Report. Mr. Smith?
Not met, so that's the last meeting. However, our meeting from, Finance Committee meeting from last week was postponed. Don't have a rescheduled date yet.
Thank you. 14.5, Teaching and Learning Committee.
We discussed that last month. We did have a meeting in November.
14.6, Ms. Barber, the Safety Committee. I know you have a report for us.
We do. We met last week and it was excellent. This meeting, Mr. Eckert runs this so well. And we did something new this time. We had tables, group tables, that were led by administrators to teach us different parts of how safety is run. And in this room, you have everyone from students, which is a really cool part because they involve the students to try to figure out how safety and security feels from their perspective. And so they're often giving us feedback and showing things that we might not otherwise see. But everything from students, principals, administrators, nurses, law enforcement, counselors, township staff, Mercy Health, Fire Department, Miami Valley, Christian. And I may have missed someone. But it was really, really neat to be in a room with all these people who care about safety and security in Forest Hills. They're all feeding into the way the buildings are handled and how we would respond if we had a crisis. So, you know, we got to learn everything from how the nurses have emergency kits prepared for students who have special needs. I learned 546 students have chronic health conditions and need special treatment. And the way that our team handles it is just remarkable. I mean, they know these kids like they're their own. And it was really, really neat to see that. I also learned, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we did receive a $41,000 safety grant. Is that correct? To use for chronic health conditions, or for not chronic health, for training and mental health. Is that correct? And I mean, we got a few emails to let us know that that existed and you went out and applied for it and got it, correct? So that's just, it was neat to see that we are looking for creative ways to make the system better with what's already out there. And one other thing that was neat that I got to see that I haven't seen yet was some of the improvements with the renovations, security cameras. And it takes a lot to get in these buildings now, which, I'm a parent, I have kids at air. And you can look at these cameras and you can see what's happening and law enforcement can see that. It's doing a lot for prevention, I would imagine, that you're just not even seeing. So I was very encouraged by that. And, you know, obviously that's not something you broadcast everywhere because you don't want everyone to know what's happening. But it was a very well-run meeting and I'm encouraged by what we're doing here. You can always do more, you can always feel like you need to do more, but I feel good about where my kids are every day, so that's good.
Thank you. Great report.
Yeah.
14.8, Legislative Liaison. Mr. Smith?
14.7.
Looked, I skipped Forest Hills Foundation. I'm sorry, Dee. Looked, I skipped Forest Hills Foundation, I'm sorry, Dee. 14.7.
Excuse me. Happy holidays. This will be very quick, because actually, we did not meet this month either, but I just had a couple events that I wanted to remind everyone of. Our second round of teacher grants were due last, a couple weeks ago, and now I think they're coming to the committee. We'll be meeting the committee that will decide, so those will be announced in early January, or mid-January. Our interviewing skills class is open to Anderson and Turpin juniors and seniors. That's on Sunday, January 27, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's right here. Students have one-on-one mock interviews with community members, and if anyone wants to volunteer to be an interviewer, we would love to have them. The ACT Blitz, which is a one-day blitz during the school day to prove ACT scores or get some ACT prep at Turpin, it'll be February 19, and at Anderson, it'll be March 4, and parents should receive an email about that in early January where they can register their students. The Distinguished Alumni Award Luncheon will be Friday, March 15. The committee has made its decisions, but not everyone has been contacted yet, so we'll be announcing those honorees probably within the next week or so, or by the beginning of January. And then Forest Hills 5K is the 10th annual, and it's May 11. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 14.8, Mr. Smith, Legislative Liaison.
Hey, as everyone is probably aware, we're in a lame duck session for our state legislature, and that's what our lobbyists at OSBA call the silly season, because you never know what's going to happen. A couple of highlights. House Bill 291, which allows school districts, among others, to purchase an employee performance duty policy instead of surety bonds for officers, will go to the governor. House Bill 58, which requires an ODE to include supplemental instruction material and handwriting in the English language arts model curriculum. My understanding is that won't impact us, since we already have instruction in that area. The House passed Senate Bill 21, which now goes to the Senate for concurrence vote. This was amended to committee, which requires the ballot wording on property tax proposals to be in terms of tax per $100,000 of fair market value, rather than $100 of tax valuation. The Senate passed House Bill 502, and now goes to the House for concurrence vote. The bill requires certain public employees to undergo biennial youth suicide awareness and prevention training. The Senate Ways and Means Committee passed a House Bill 343, which limits the authority of boards of education to challenge property valuations. It's another one that I don't think will impact Forest Hills, because our policy is that we already don't do that on residential property. The last one is a committee, the House Governance and Accountability and Oversight Committee conducted sponsored testimony. This bill requires public schools and public universities to create training for staff and instruction for students on food allergies and allergic reaction assistance. This one and one I mentioned a minute ago are examples of things that are important, very important, well-meaning, but it's an example of incremental costs that are laid on to public schools, it's unfunded mandates. There's no funding that will come along with this. Again, these are important issues, but it's one of the reasons that over time, even though our revenue in dollars is flat or fixed, our costs will go up even though we're not making decisions in that area. So that's one of the things we just have to live with, and we don't have any choice. And we have to spend the money on it. I also wanted to mention to the board that at the November meeting, I'm serving my second year as an appointment on the Federal Relations Network, which is a group that, there are two people from every congressional district that go to DC once a year and undergo training and then do lobbying on Capitol Hill on behalf of all schools in the state of Ohio. So I will miss the January meeting. That's occurring at the same time our meeting will take place. That's my report.
Thank you. 14.9, Ms. Lawver, the Forest Hills Teacher Association Report. We always save the best for last.
Well, good evening, and I wish everyone happy holidays and so forth here as we're winding down the week here before the break, and trust me, if you go to any of our buildings, it does not look like it's winding down. It actually looks quite winding up. With that being stated, I know I didn't present last month, but this month I will not take too much of your time, but I do have a little bit here to organize for us this evening. So over the past month and a half, the association's been involved in reorganization, state meetings, and sharing district-level discussions with our teachers and our members of the association concerning many issues around items either from levy through classroom management to different types of issues. On the issue of reorganization, this year's focus is to grow the work of the teachers' contracts surrounding our building advisory committee and district advisory committee. I know that I've spoken about this at length several times, however, the importance of that work is noted not only within our school district, but actually came out, I was at several different state meetings in the last month and a half, and one of them, I've had, you know, people ask me, hey, can we see that language, because that sounds like a great way for schools to process and retain and improve their own networks within their schools, especially large schools such as ours. So the role of the association is to work on assisting in the overall strength of the workforce and working environment of Forest Hill School District. Strong relations create strength for learning for our students, so when we're able to do our jobs in the classroom really well, and we all are focused on that, it creates great outcomes, as we see, you know, every single day here in Forest Hills. I often work behind the scenes with my executive team, and I want to make sure tonight I say publicly about these people, because just like with you all, as being a public servant in many ways, our teachers serve together, we're not in the same space. All of us are, and every one of us are in a different building or in different classrooms. So Mike Roberts is our vice president from Air Elementary. Ben Scholes from Turpin High School is our new treasurer this year. Stacy Moyer is our membership, and she's at Summit Elementary. Dan Armstrong is our delegate-at-large at Anderson High School, and Lisa Heinecke is our communication chair here at Nagel Middle School. We are always working and discussing on ways to improve, share, and learn, and develop open avenues to maintain strong teacher leadership. Secondly, as a district, we should be more than proud that we are working together towards solution-based discussions. We have not had to have formal revisions in our school district in more than four years, and even then, it was a very small one. This one alone is a cost savings in time and energy and cost to our teachers, organization, and the board. Working openly in confidence and honest conversations, this is a positive solution base that always allows us to focus on improving teaching and learning, and often, believe it or not, we share a lot of common things together. When we get together as a group on our district advisory committee with the boards group from Scott, Prebels, Mike Broadwater, Greg Sears, and Tammy Carnahan, it's amazing how much work the eight of us can really just sit and be very open and honest with each other to work towards solution-based areas. Recognizing our board and our trust within Forest Hills Teacher Association is moving us in the right direction. Last month, in our state work, OEA, just like what you handle a lot of times, Randy, with your group, we have two different meetings that are large-scale meetings that Dan Armstrong and I do attend, and ours was on December 1. Those are about four- to six-hour meetings that happen, and we do vote on just our own bylaws and so forth within OEA, but also talk about state work and so forth. And it was this time, just kind of an in-process, elections are over, and we're moving into a new administration. So the next one for us will be in May, and at that time, we hope to take a new group of staff with us. I myself do attend about six state meetings a month between SWOEA and a large-scale inventory meeting that does take place with Columbus. There are 24 large associations, and what that means is by percentage and group, and SWA, which is where the Forest Hills teachers belong to Southwest Ohio Education Association, that organization governs then this section, and then we send our ideas and bylaws forth to the state as well. And thirdly, right now, our teachers are very involved with being aware of what's going on around them as far as levy discussions to anything concerning state laws and mandates and changes. As I did note earlier, as you were speaking, that a lot of those changes often our teachers are reactive to. We don't always get to be as proactive on our state laws and so forth. But what I do find is a very large group of teachers that are very committed to the students of Forest Hill School, students, community, and their parents. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Questions, anyone? Ms. Lawver, thank you very much. Happy holidays. We value you, our relationship, and of course, our teachers.
Yes, we do appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Is there something else?
No, I would want to add something if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank this board and administration for their support. Me personally, I'm just wrapping up my last month as state president of the House School Boards Association, and like I said, I appreciate your indulgence to allow me, I've missed a few things here and there, but your support, attending extra meetings. When I would ask administration for some information that I needed for the state, I always got the information very quickly, so I greatly appreciated that. I did a lot of traveling around the state, and I continue to be so amazed at the Forest Hill School District. When I look at other school districts that I've visited, there are 614 in the state, I didn't visit them all, but got to meet people, board members from almost every district in the state, and they envy Forest Hills. I continue to be reminded that we have great teachers, great students, they come to school ready and eager to learn. We have great administration, we've got great education programs. Now, or we will by the time September rolls around, have great facilities. We've got great extracurricular activities, great sports, and all this at a cost that's below average. And so, like I said, I really still believe unique, Forest Hills is a very, very unique and special school district, and although we still have challenges, but it's still a great place to have your kids go and a great place to live. So anyway, again, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. We got a lot of benefit of your service on the state level, so thank you for doing that. We don't have an executive session. Our next meeting is our organizational meeting of January 4, 2019, at 7:00 a.m. Typically, what we do at those meetings is we set, collect board leadership for the next year, and set our board meetings for the next year, and not much else, but you're all welcome to attend. And after that, our next regularly scheduled meeting is what, January?
It'll be determined on...
It's not yet fixed, right, but we know when it's going to be. All right. And with that, happy holidays, everyone. Thank you for coming. It's been a great year. Kim, anything else, anyone? Motion to adjourn, Ben?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Frum?
Yes. Good night, everyone.